And if we can do the invocation, and we're glad to have Imam Rashid Kalood from the Crescent Community come forward.
I don't know that he's here.
Do you hear? Excuse me, we defer to Reverend Jones now.
Let's bow our heads, please. Dear heavenly Father, we know that you're always with us, near us, beside us in all that we do. We ask that you be with us this evening as we consider the affairs of this our great city. Grant us the patience to listen, the wisdom to decide, and the courage to act. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, unto the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, and do we have the roll call?
Yes, sir, all present.
Okay, do we have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved. Second.
Okay, votes open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
And Mr. Moss has a comment.
I just want to note that I left about four thirty and maybe ended about about five fifteen because of there was an item which I had to excuse myself from. The times are approximate.
Alright.
Mr. Moss, I will note that in the minutes as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a vote to certify the informal informal sessions of September seventeenth, twenty nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and the vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, I now have the pleasure of doing a presentation to the for Faith Works Coalition Day. Do we have Pat Rolle, Glenn Schweitzer, and Matthew Weinstein present? It's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas Faith Works Coalition Incorporated has joined hands to help our community for over ten years and has been committed to assist homeowners desperately in need of home repairs in the city of Virginia Beach. And whereas Faith Works' mission promotes building community spirit through collaboration with other charitable and private organizations whose goal and objectives are aligned to theirs. And whereas the nonprofit organization comprised of volunteers who devote their time and talent for building homes for the elderly, disabled, military, retirees, and families whose financial position does not allow for costly home repairs. Whereas Faith Works builds the willingness and desires and others in need of Virginia Beach to enhance the joy of fellowship inherent in faith-based volunteer community projects. And whereas Faith Works has provided emergency relief through repair and construction services in areas suffering from natural disasters. And whereas the unassuming organization has received accolades from their community achievement by the Volunteer Hampton Roads and statewide in the Virginia Neighborhood Conference. And whereas Faith Works Coalition was the recipient of our own Virginia Beach Human Rights Daniel L. Stone Humanitarian Award. And whereas Faith Works' projects result in a vibrant community spirit and improve neighborhoods, instilling a renewed belief that all things are possible when people care for one another. And whereas this unique organization should be recognized for having recently completed a momentous thousandth home repair project through volunteer staff members, sweat equity, and no government funding. Whereas Faith Works truly is making a difference in people's quality of life, the home physical conditions, as well as neighborhood preservation. Whereas Faith Works Coalition Incorporated and its volunteers have embodied the qualities we seek as leaders in our community and have shown their faith by their work. Therefore, I, Robert M. Dyer, Mayor of Virginia Beach, do hereby proclaim October first, twenty nineteen, Faith Works Coalition Day. Thank you. And please accept this on behalf of the grateful city you helped make Virginia Beach the great city that it is. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Okay, at this point, we're going to have a public comment period on the two thousand twenty legislative agenda. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. The first speaker is Reed Greenman. And then after Mr. Greenman will be Diana Howard.
Welcome, Reed.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, Acting City Manager. First of all, I think, once again, we've got a flawed process here. If you're really interested in knowing what it is that we want to say about these fifteen complex items that you've got on the legislative agenda, each one should have been put on the agenda separately so we would have had enough time to discuss them. I have notes on all fifteen of these items and why I oppose or why I support them, but I don't have sufficient time to actually go through my pages of notes and research that I did. There are twenty-one pages in our legislative agenda which was published and put out dated last Friday, the twenty-seventh of September. I could go through this list and I just really won't have time to tell you all of the things or why I agree or disagree. I think that's a disservice because you don't have the benefit of the work and the research I did to provide you with information you may or may not have. Having said that, I think the most egregious thing that is on this list is the last item, number fifteen. I cannot oppose the creation of a community development authority with any more venomous disagreement than this. We already have a development authority which I think should be abolished since it usurps your responsibility even though it's a political subdivision. You have responsibility to do these types of items. I vehemently implore you not to ask the General Assembly to pass the creation of another unelected, all-appointed body that can issue debt for whatever little special projects you want, the dome site today, whatever else it might be. That's bad. I support Mr. Moss's item that he has in here that requires item eleven. If you decide to run for another office on City Council, resign the one you have. Don't appoint somebody. That's usurping the will of the voters to pick people, so I like item B of that. And I'm going to speak on that later because there is another agenda item on that. I don't know how much time I have, but I'll try to go through it. Number one, the voting rights. I agree with that. I think it's great to extend it from one and a half weeks to forty-five. However, I don't agree with the new redistricting commission. Item two, totally disagree with this whole regional greenhouse gas initiative and the extortion of carbon allowances and having auctions to sell them off at two hundred and fifty million dollars a year that puts Virginia businesses at a disadvantage, Mr. Jones. And look at this, I'm already out of time. It's incredible. I guess, given all the things that are on here, I would encourage you not to vote and pass this until you have more public input on these fifteen very complex items with insufficient time to discuss them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Howard. And after Mrs. Howard is Barbara Messner.
Welcome.
Good evening. I will certainly try and go through this fast. I too like the voting rights being able to go earlier rather than, you know, we're not having any excuse, but if you're going to do anything that takes away voter ID or anything, I wouldn't be for that. The regional greenhouse gas initiative, no. Backdoor tax. And the man-made CO2 is less than one percent. It's a fraction of less than one percent. So it's just ridiculous for everybody to go tippy over that. The Menhaden fishing, yes. Certificate of Public Need, no. Again, let the free market work. Why you have to ask permission? Why does the medical facility have to ask permission to get equipment just because it might compete with a hospital? Was it the communications tax? So we find a way not to pay tax on something, you're not getting enough taxes on it, so you want to raise taxes? No. Resignation for running for a city council other than the mayor, of course, that should be the way it is because that's just playing musical chairs. If you think that a district seat is more important than an at-large seat, then vote for district voting. Put it on the ballot, right? The film tax credit, why don't we do this for everybody so that they would come here, let everybody have a tax credit, let's level the playing field so all new businesses can have a tax credit. The change in the definition for small businesses, that's good, like that. And I agree with the number fifteen that Reed Greenman said. The Communication Development Authority, no. No. We already have enough unelected authorities, commissions, and everything controlling our taxes, and if they can't get enough financing privately after giving them GAAP financing and our tax dollars, they're getting all the state taxes, all the local taxes, the tip fund. If they can't get a bank to put up the money for their end of the deal, why should we create a community development authority to help them? This makes absolutely no sense. So definitely we're not before that. I don't know what I missed here because I forgot to cross things out while I was going, but that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Dee.
Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner is Andrew Jackson.
Would those seats reserved for the events that's over? Or is it for something else? Because it's kind of hard to see through, Mr. Davis.
It was for the folks that were here for the proclamation.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I appreciate what Reed and Diana Howard said about the abolition of the Development Authority. I brought that up in twenty eighteen at the budget. And no one else seemed to be, you know, they even helped with the alternative budget. So of course it should be abolished. It is, it incurs debt. It's a major conflict of interest because everyone on council appoints them. I don't agree with the appointments. The General Assembly, Bill Distef, he was on council, he stepped aside to run for higher office. Delegate Barry Knight, ARP, Millionaires Club. Glenn Davis, he stepped down from his seat to go to higher office. So these are all people that you work with, okay? As far as the voting rights, we need better vetting. And we shouldn't have people on the absentee ballot before everything is, you know, been processed properly. David Nygaard should never have been there. He shouldn't have voted. All of his votes since he wasn't legal should be nullified, redacted. And here it says voting rights. Human Rights Commission, appointed by council. And city council. So high-speed rail. I mean, we don't have any money. We're two billion in debt, unfunded money for police, firemen, their pensions, their health care. You know, all this money wasted, I think it was a hundred million a mile for light rail, that hasn't worked out, and now you want high speed? We don't have the money. The state doesn't have the money. The state has six billion in debt that's going to economic development projects. And as far as the film tax credit, most of that is for Pharrell and I Am Not For Something In The Water, Reward Party for twenty years of problems with College Beach Weekend. And you're doing another one that you're promoting and, yeah. And as far as definition of small business, you know, I would like to know exactly what that is because, you know, we don't get all the information. The full four hundred and forty-five page agenda isn't, you know, available to us like it is to y'all on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Jackson.
Welcome, Andrew.
Good evening. I'm going to be short and sweet. Like the first speaker that spoke, all of those items on there, you couldn't possibly, in your wildest dreams, even think that someone can hold an intelligent conversation on each one of those in three minutes. You've insulted the citizenry. You really have. To put all of those things on there and expect to say, well, come up and talk for three minutes and then go sit down and shut up, that's really what you told us. Because there's no way at all we could talk about all of those fifteen items in three minutes. And I think every one of you know that. That is just not right. And I think it's a slap in the face to the citizenry. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers on the public comment.
Okay, we will move on to public hearings. Item number one, proposed charter amendment, City Council resigned to run. Speakers?
Yes, sir. The first speaker is Michelle Riley. And after Ms. Riley will be Barbara Messner.
Hi, everybody. I would like to say that I absolutely am in favor of this resolution that Mr. Moss is proposing to change our city charter. Just because something is legal doesn't mean that it's necessarily ethical. Nothing in our city charter says that you have to have eleven people on our board. So personally, I don't understand why if someone resigns their seat or is asked to step down for whatever reason, I don't understand why we have to appoint somebody to that seat at all. Why not just wait and have an election and let the people decide who we want to be on our city council? I think it's opportunistic to take advantage of this policy. And it's a little bit disrespectful to the people who voted you into that spot to then turn around and decide to run for a totally different seat when people helped you get to that place. You had volunteers, you had voters who asked you to do that, and then you just decide you're going to go do something else and it leaves room for an appointment and then the people don't get to decide who they want to be on our board. So that's about it, but thank you. I would just like to say that I'm completely in favor of Mr. Moss's resolution.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Barbara Messner. And then after Ms. Messner will be Reed Greenman.
Good evening. Okay, I'm not in favor of it at this time because it's a little too late. The ballot's already printed. They've been voting since the twentieth. So this should have been done a long time ago when Sesam started the whole thing and even prior to that, okay? I'm not in favor of this grandstanding resolution after the ballots have been printed and when thousands of residents have already been voting by absentee ballot since Friday, September twentieth. It's discrimination to have different rules for different seats. Ms. Wilson should not be able to use the platform of her office to run in a different seat. If Ben Davenport had to give up his at-large seat to run for mayor along with Dyer who gave up his Centerville seat, then so should Ms. Wilson. I have an issue with council appointing other council members for decades, including the Kentsville seat when the city appointed Harry Dyzel. These positions are elected positions. There is no consistency. When Sesam abruptly resigned on April thirtieth, his seat sat vacant until the normal election. When Lewis Jones was appointed vice mayor by council, then his seat sat vacant. Ms. Wilson should be disqualified and none of her votes should be counted if she doesn't want to fulfill her at-large sworn oath of office until it expires, I believe, December thirty-first, twenty twenty. I personally oppose district voting as it's easy for council member to pander to small groups. I am a hundred percent for at-large positions for Virginia Beach council members, the mayor and the vice mayor. It's all one two-billion-dollar budget. And on the resolutions, twenty fifteen, Moss on town bank conflicts and I forget what the other one was, they're never seconded. So, you know, if this one goes, it's still after the fact, after the horses are already out of the gate. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Reed Greenman. And after Mr. Greenman is Conrad Shisventer.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. This is ridiculous. You said you wouldn't run, but then you changed your mind after you told us and you weren't appointee. So you already broke your word. Rosemary, you have a seat. Why you're getting involved in this race at the beach is ridiculous. This process is ridiculous. It's broken. This shouldn't be allowed. All of you are elected and should, well, most of you are elected. You shouldn't be voting on budgets if you're appointed to this board for a two-billion-dollar budget with a couple of weeks. Absolutely, this process needs to be fixed, but you know what? It's your own integrity. How can you do this stuff? Do you know that the message that you send to us when you guys act like this? Oh, we don't care. We're just going to appoint somebody. We'll vacate this seat and appoint someone to that and that'll just circumvent the entire electoral process. This is the foundation of our country. This is serious stuff that you're doing. It's so corrupt. I support this, but it should go further than this. Stop appointing people to represent me. It's hard enough getting people elected, but didn't appoint your buddies and then vote on these massive budgets? Shame on you all. You should support this. This change is long overdue and you shouldn't be doing it, Rosemary. Thank you.
Conrad Shisventer. And after Mr. Shisventer is Tim Wurst.
Good evening, comrade.
If you asked me a year ago if the reason this is up for debate would ever occur, I'd have bet you that it wouldn't, but here we are. And I would like to stump for support of the charter amendment. This is for two reasons. And the first is representative democracy. We all, or at least most, think a district candidate should be voted on from district constituents only. In fact, that change should be in the legislative packet. And in following up to the district representation, I pointed to the fact if Councilwoman Wilson has, another vacancy would be created, which necessitates a city council appointment and not a people's vote. For an at-large seat vacancy, I would want the city's citizens to make that choice and not the council body itself. If a district vacancy, I'd want the district citizens to determine to fill in and not this council body. But if wishes were horses, right? And I mean all this with no offense to my friend, Councilwoman Wilson. Also, the final reason, I don't like how the current situation doesn't allow for loss. If you have to resign to take another race, you could lose it all. Right now, there isn't the risk of losing a position entirely. So I ask you all to consider supporting the modification going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Wurst. And after Mr. Wurst is Andrew Jackson.
Welcome, Tim.
Evening, sir. Council, Mr. Acting City Manager. I can't agree more with Reed and Dee, Mr. Jackson. We did a fine job of speaking about the legislative agenda and wanting to get the Communication Development Authority approved. I agree that we have enough going on already without people who are voted into that position. But I'm here to agree with Mr. Moss's idea of when you hold a seat already, that you would have to leave your current seat. That's a great idea. The same thing's happening with our mayor's seat and that's what should happen. So I'm echoing everything that you've heard so far. We need people to vote for those who are in office. And Reed said so eloquently and perfectly that it's hard enough to get folks elected that we appoint people right into these seats. So I would love to see this passed, taken up to the General Assembly to see if we can get that through. And on a very quick note, I'd also like to see things that were brought up when we ran for city council last year. We talked about district voting. We talked about term limits. Where are those things that we talked about while we were running for office and said we supported those? Let's get those out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Jackson.
Welcome back, Andrew.
Thank you. I have mixed feelings. Not that mixed about that particular resolution or that. I just believe that we, the people, get suckered sometimes. It's no accident that someone would run for another seat and leave a seat open. That's no accident. Because I can probably tell you who would want to be appointed for that seat. I won't go that far. But it's out there. It just, I respect this body, but I don't want this body to continue to think that we, the people, are stupid. We are not. We see what goes on. We really do. Mr. Mayor, when you ran for city mayor, what did you do with your seat? You don't have, I know you can't answer that, but you left it vacant. Mr. Davenport left his seat vacant to allow someone else the opportunity at some point to fill that seat. That's the way it should be. I don't have any problem with a person being appointed because we, the people, get a chance to come. We know who those people are going to be. And we get a chance to come here and speak for them or against them, however. So there is a form of citizen involvement. And then they have to run for a seat anyway, so we get a chance to appoint them or elect them or not elect them. So I don't have a problem with that. But to hold a seat and then run for another seat, for whatever reason that is, I have my own thoughts here, but for whatever reason, that's wrong. Open that seat up if you really want to run. You take your chance, win, lose, or draw. But that's what it should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you all very much for the input. Public hearing number two, consider sale of excess property on two-two-two-four London Street.
I have no speaker, sir.
Alrighty. And then, public hearing number three, proposed franchise agreement, Virginia Beach Horseback Incorporated.
I have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Okay, there are so many franchise agreements, but this particular one, the company is originally from North Carolina, I don't know if he's living here now, but he takes up the entire beach access, which blocks emergency vehicles, it blocks, it's dangerous for people walking around. He has a giant, oversized, white pickup truck, double cab. He has a trailer, a huge trailer, that goes almost to the street. He has a quad, and he's there practically year-round. This is a vendor that's taking up parking. Vendors should not have priority over residents and public access. Even the people in the hotels, they can't, that work at the hotels can't park there. There really isn't parking for us. I don't know why, with all these events that you want to have year-round. You continue to expand, it used to be Memorial Day to Labor Day that we had parking. We had to pay parking. It was only on the ocean side. After six o'clock, we could park for free. And you've systematically removed everything. Ninth Street Parking Garage, Breeden Parking Garage, Thirty-first Street, it's all for the hotel. And they, and the staff even park in the neighborhood. So to keep giving franchises to vendors, on top of the vendors that park on the boardwalk during events, I just could picture of this semi-truck, a huge semi-truck on Atlantic Avenue. The police only ticket us and tow air cars. So I oppose these franchises for vendors. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one more speaker, Reed Greenman.
Good evening, City Council. It's nice to be able to come up here and give you a compliment on something. I went through your packet and I read this agreement and it's really well-written. I don't know who wrote it. I don't know who wrote it, but they did a great job looking out for the benefit of the citizens. Personally, I support this project. I think it's a great idea and free enterprise. But if you go through the details of it, it's really looking out for the interests of the city and promoting all the kinds of things that we want. All of the negatives of this particular business, taking care of what's cleaning up after the horses, making sure they're handled by the right people with the right training, the enforcement to take care of the animals, everything is covered in that franchise agreement. It's really well-done. If I had one objection, it's to the amount of money that you're charging for this business versus what its revenues are. I think it's significantly lower than what you should consider. But all of that having been said, great job to whoever put that together, because all of the detractors or the negatives have been accounted for, and that liability's put on the business. And they have to clean up after themselves and make sure it's safe. So this is a good project, and personally, I just think it adds to the beach in a period, and it's, it's fun. So I support it, and I just want to say thanks to whoever wrote up that agreement.
Thank you, Reed. Appreciate that.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, great. And, uh, we're, uh, just before we proceed to the consent agenda, we're gonna extend courtesy to those who want to speak on items, but they're, they're the only speaker. So we have several items under ordinances and resolution with only one speaker signed up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify each item number that they have registered on. The speaker will still receive three minutes to con, uh, comment on each item. And then I'll also, uh, read the speaker policy before we go forward. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, telephone number, uh, you know, to the clerk for the record. Okay, so if we can proceed, Madam Clerk?
Okay. The first speaker is Barbara Messner, and we have you signed up for item 1B, 4, 8, 9B, and 9C.
And, good evening.
Good evening.
I appreciate you coming up to me, Mayor Dyer, at the beginning of the meeting to tell me. So how could I possibly be prepared to do all of this? But I will try, and I would just like to say that I'm... Excuse me? That I'm independent of any groups, and there's a reason, because some groups are opposed to corporate welfare and selective picking winners and losers and supporting the, um, hotel motel industry. I had legitimate reasons for opposing the franchise and all of the franchises, though. Some people can kiss up when they want. That's, that's not how I operate. Okay, the appointments to the boards and commissions by Councilmember Henley, I'm not sure exactly what this is, but, uh, as all of you know, I oppose you, the city appointing people to, um, commissions. Mr. Dyer, you said these were paid positions, employment positions.
No, no, uh, they were personnel.
Personnel?
Yeah, personnel.
Personnel, okay. You're only supposed to go behind closed doors to discuss that, if it's a paid position, or an employment position. Advisory Commission, Advertising Advisory, Bayfront Advisory, Beaches and Waterfront Advisory, Bikes and Trails Advisory, Board of Code Appeals. The only paid one is Economic Development, which of course you know I've been opposed for, for a very long time. Green Ribbon Committee? I mean, if you're paying these people, we have a right to know. Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Historic Review Board, Housing Advisory Board, Human Rights Commission, Investigative Review Panel, Oceana Land Use Conformity Committee, Old Beach Design Review Committee, Open Space Advisory Committee, Social Services Board, Southside Network Authority, Wetlands Board. So I, I disagree that these are employment issues, and we should, it should, it's on the agenda. It's right here on the agenda, and we should have all the information. It shouldn't be hidden from us, who you want to appoint, because usually it's people with conflicts. And you appoint yourselves. Mr. Rouse, I remember in the beginning, the first time when they were appointing, uh, right off the bat, Ms. Wooten and Mr. Tower and yourself, you said you didn't want to vote for yourself, so I appreciate that. But since then, no one has said a word. Okay, what is the, um, and B, special events permits? Almost everything is special events. People's homes, uh, the event houses. So I don't know what that is. Okay, so what is the next one, Amanda?
Number four.
Number four. Actually, it was two, um...
You did not sign up for number two.
Okay. I thought I did, but...
Well, you, you are signed up on number two, but that's not, the items were hearing now. Number four is the next item.
Oh, okay. Okay, so that, I'll go back to that one. Okay. Four is the horseback riding. Like I said, this is advertised in all the brochures and magazines. Sports is what brings people to the oceanfront year-round. All these venues, everything you want is year-round, because you have more hotels, and they're all competing against each other. I'm opposed to all these vendors taking over our beach. It's a commercial beach. Now, this isn't out in the middle of nowhere. We have three miles. That's it. You know, people have to move out of the way of the horses when they walk. Okay, is there anything else, Amanda?
Uh, the next item...
Number eight.
Is number eight.
All right.
Okay, eight, go ahead.
Okay, I'm just waiting. Okay. I forgot to bring the magazine, because Moss had a comment on this one last time. Appropriate 139,000 from the fund balance of the Police Federal and State Seized Assets Special Revenue Fund to the 2019-20, 2020 operating budget. Like I said, the quotes I made about policing for profit and where the money goes is in the Institute for Justice Magazine, and I will bring that to show you. Okay.
9B.
9B. Okay, I will skip that one. Anything else?
9C.
9C. Yeah, um... Basically, 300,000 from Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to Human Services Operating Budget. I, it's like, I don't understand why these budgets are set in place. We have horrible problems with the Human Services Department, um, which most people that have been here for a while are aware of. So to keep moving money around is a problem, you know, as other people have said, the process. Okay? Is that all?
That's, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Messner, before you leave, a point of clarification. Mr. Stiles, when I read the call to go into executive session, when we go to personnel, and I list a number of the, um, actions that we're allowed to take, one of them is appointees, and it also gives the enabling statute to that?
That is correct.
Okay. So the point is, you know, when we do the call, we list all the things that we do within the personnel part of discussing discipline and appointments and all those other things, and there is a state citation, uh, but, which allows us to do that. So I just wanted to give you that for clarification. It doesn't necessarily have to be a, a paid position. Okay?
Right. And, um, it's a list of the positions, but not a list of the names, and that's what I've requested. And that's an opinion, not a legal ruling, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then Conrad Schisventer is the only i, um, individual signed up on item three. Mr. Schisventer.
Yes. Now, I know this is more symbolic, as I expect this resolution to pass, but in noting, this is proposed by Councilwoman Wooten, I'd just like to tip my cap to her continued efforts to bolster businesses in Hampton Roads, especially small businesses. This helps. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, uh, Mr. Wooten, we can go forward with the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move for approval under the consent agenda, the following items. Under ordinances, resolutions, item K1B, ordinance to amend city code section 4-1 regarding special events permits. Item three, resolution to declare November 15th to December 15th, 2019, as bi-local month. Item four, ordinance to grant a franchise agreement to Virginia Beach Horseback, Inc., regarding allow guided horseback riding tours on the beach. Item six, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into portions of city property known as Lake Joyce and the 25-foot, excuse me, strip of land around Lake Joyce located at the rear of 4321 Blackbeard Road, regard removing existing pier, construct and maintain proposed riprep, revetment, timber pier, and boat ramp, and maintain the existing bulkhead and fencing. Item seven, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease with the United States Coast Guard for up to five years for 36 plus or minus square foot portion of city property located on the jetty on the north side of Rudy Inlet regarding lighting, power supply equipment, and associated navigational aids. Item eight, ordinance to appropriate 139,000 dollars from fund balance of the Police Federal and State Seized Assets Special Revenue Fund to the FY 1920 Police Operating Budget regarding confidential informant awards, canines, rifle-mounted lasers, light replacements, and tactical training. Item nine, ordinance to accept and appropriate a $77,750 from the Department of Homeland Security to the FY 1920 Police Operating Budget and transfer $25,917 within the FY 2019-20 Police Operating Budget to provide the required local grant match regarding Marine Patrol equipment. Item B, 96,000, correction, 98,619 dollars from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the FY 2019-20 Human Services Operating Budget, authorize one full-time position and convert one part-time position to a full-time position regarding STEP VA Prime Care Screenings Services Program. Item C, 195,000 dollars from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to FY 2019-20 Human Services Operating Budget and authorize two full-time positions for a STEP VA outpatient behavioral health services program. Item D, 226,821 dollars and 41 cents in developer contribution from Renaissance Apartments 1 LP to CIP number 2-025, Witch Duck Road Phase II regarding construction of required improvements.
Okay. Okay, now, a public hearing on planning.
Under planning, item, uh, L2, Robert and Janet Kotke for a modification of conditions regarding preschool daycare facility at 2660 West Neck Road in the Prince Sand District. Item five, Chanel Latham and Dongjo Kim for a conditional use permit regarding assembly use of 4604 Pembroke Lake Circle in the Bayside District. Item six, Michael Carlson and William D. Freerson III for conditional use permit regarding automobile, automobile repair garage at 1181 Jensen Drive in the district, in the beach district, noting that there's an amended condition nine as discussed in the informal session. Item seven, Christina Marchionne, Bruce and Susan Whitaker for conditional use permit regarding automotive repair garage at 2601 Production Road in the Beach District. Item eight, Monica Yvonne Lancaster for conditional use permit regarding a family daycare home at 1505 Colebrook Drive in the Centerville District. Item nine, TNS Lawn and Landscaping LLC for a conditional use permit regarding a bulk storage yard at 400 Davis Street, Kempsville District. So move, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, have you approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood?
Item 1A. Okay, uh, we're gonna go now, uh, to ordinances and, uh, resolutions. Item number 1A, ordinance to amend city code, uh, sections 2-3, ray appointments to boards and com, uh, commissions requested by Councilmember Henley.
Conrad Schisventer. And then Barbara Messner.
I do not wish the amended action to occur. This isn't bearing on the fact my own name has been in this talent pool since the beginning of the year. It's bearing on an appreciation for quickness. Adding a requisite second council meeting to discuss an applicant's appointment so far only seems to draw it out. If the process has created faults today, I'd like to know, but a same-day discussion and vote seems best, and I'd like to keep that. So thank you.
Thank you, Conrad.
Barbara Messner.
Okay, um... Yeah. This is another reason Ms. Henley, uh, has requested this. We need to get this information. Years ago, everything used to be like six months. We had plenty of time to get in touch with people. There weren't 20,000 things on every agenda. I oppose, as I said earlier, I oppose the city council appointing boards and commission. We, we elected you. We pay you. If you can't do it, then maybe you're putting too many things on the agenda, and maybe they shouldn't be, uh, happening. So I don't know what the changes are, because I haven't read the 445 pages, but, um, I oppose the appointments in general. We hire y'all, and we should be able to elect everyone that plays a major role, especially planning and the Economic Development Authority. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion?
I'm sorry. Let me, let me, so Reed, I don't have you signed up for 1A. Okay.
Okay, welcome. Come forward.
First of all, I'm going to support Barbara's amendment, because I think it's a step in the right direction. At your recent retreat, when you talked about this issue, there was a lot of discussion about rushing things through. Like Ms. Messner, I think our entire appointment process is broken, and I've addressed this with you many times, and it doesn't seem to get better. But this is a good amendment. At least you're gonna take a week. You're not gonna bring it up today, talk about it, come out here and pass people. As Barbara mentioned, these boards and commissions are vitally important and have amazing amounts of power. They really do affect our city. And you guys were elected to represent us, but there's a lot of authority you've delegated down to them. We are not involved in this process in any way, shape, or form to know who's been put up for them, to provide you information, to do research on conflicts of interest, to give you information you may not have. And while Barbara alluded to your large packet, which I read everything in your packet tonight, there's a lot of information it doesn't contain that you probably don't know before you make your decision, but we would be more than happy to research and provide to you, particularly in the area of conflicts of interest. There are items tonight that you voted on that I didn't sign up to speak for, because I don't want to drag this out. But there are potential and existing conflicts of interest in some of the things you put on your consent agenda. I just didn't want to be here all night at the dais dragging your process out. These appointments are messed up, and you really need to go back and say, okay, we're gonna appoint people to this board and commission. Here's our list of finalists. You put the names out one week. Give us an opportunity to research and contact you and give you information in favor or opposed. I came out and spoke in favor of Ms. Marsh to be on the Development Authority, because I think she'd be a great addition. It's not just opposing, it's supporting. Some of the power of these boards and commissions is amazing. They're as equal to you. They're as equal to you in authority. We don't elect them, and you appoint them, but you don't ask us, is this a good guy or a bad guy? Should this woman be reviewed? Is there a conflict of interest? And Mr. Jones, sometimes you've got to dig a little bit, and all of a sudden, you look at who owns these companies and who they are, and then you go to VPAP and look at their campaign contributions, and you look at this stuff and see who owns property, and all of a sudden, the corruption just hits you in the face. But you don't know that, because A, you're not given the information, and B, you're not letting us help you do a better job staffing these boards and commissions. I'd like you to go farther than what Barbara proposed. Get us involved in the process, and let us give you information about these potential appointees, so that you don't make mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, yes, John.
Well, Mrs. Henley asked me if I would lead in on the discussion and put on the table as a motion for its adoption. I want to applaud Councilwoman Henley for listening to all of us at the retreat and kind of distilling down our individual comments into a solution that we could all support. I think this is all about helping us. This is a business rule for us. I think that's the best way to explain it, so that someone makes multiple nominations, it's not just one, multiple names, one Tuesday, everybody gets the packet, and Friday, get the resume, gives us a chance to reach out to the community, ask questions, and then two weeks from that date, when we meet next, that's when we have a vote. I understand why some people think about comments, but you know, we lose a lot of good people who want to be considered for committees, who are willing to volunteer, but who really don't want to go through, what you see in Washington at least, this vetting process that isn't often constructive. You can't get the people you want to volunteer to volunteer, and I think that's a part of the business that people might not see, but if you're sitting here trying to get the volunteers to do heavy lifting. But we really don't delegate our authority. I don't want anyone to walk away that this council has delegated away its authority to these commissions, but we do need the diversity of expertise, we do need the diversity of backgrounds and economic status, and we make a conscious hard choice to try to make sure that our boards and commissions reflect all the views of the community. Have we done that as well as we could? No, we haven't. Are we trying to make it better? Yes, we are, and this is a business rule to how to make it better, and then you need to hold us accountable through this process to make sure that the boards and commissions that we appoint reflect the community that we live in, and I think that's the challenge we have, and I think we're committed to do that, and I thank Mr. Henley for putting this together, and I move for its approval.
Second. Okay, any other discussion? Vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you've approved the ordinance regarding the appointments of boards and commissions.
Okay, moving on to next, item number 2, and it's a resolution to move the November 5, 2019, regular meeting to the city council to November 12, 2019, at the request of city council.
First speaker is Reed Greaman, and then the next speaker is Barbara Messner.
Hello again.
Good evening. So, once again, I'd like to thank you for trying to do a good thing. Yeah, having city council on voting night's a bad idea, but as many of you may recall who have been on this council a while, for years, I've been asking you to coordinate with the school board, so that I don't have to make a decision whether to go to my school board meeting and provide my input like I'm doing, or come to city council. And the school board finally worked with me and others, and they changed their schedule so that they're not on the same night as you. Now you have an opportunity to go to a different night, and you schedule it on the same night as the school board. Takes five minutes to go to the website and say, when are the school board meetings? So, you didn't do that, so now you've scheduled a conflict trying to avoid, you know, by doing the right thing, because you didn't do your homework. November 19th, there's no school board meeting. Maybe you shouldn't change it to the 12th, maybe you should change it to the 19th, or if you don't want a conflict, what about the day after the election, the 6th? But please stop scheduling these meetings at the same time as the school board, because they need some help, too, and in a $2 billion budget, they're one half of our budget. They're just as important as all of you, even more so, because they're taking care of our kids. I applaud what you were trying to do. No, we shouldn't have city council on the same night as the election, but please don't schedule them at the same time as the school board. I wish you would reconsider this, change that date. Thank you.
Barbara Messner?
Good evening. I've been speaking on restricted access to city government for a long time, and I've been after everyone not to have these conflicts. In 2012, you had a council meeting, and many of us, including candidates who used to come to council meetings more often, we all rushed to the North End so we could speak, and we weren't allowed to, they weren't allowed to speak at the special North End meeting. But this has been ongoing a lot longer than just recent, and it's selective. You know, after some, like, I think Will Sessom's, when he was running, he changed it because he wanted, he wanted more help with his election. So it's selective. You don't just pick and choose when you change it, and what's going on, and who's running. And I've proposed, you know, changing this for a long time. I found out when it was changed for Mr. Jones, because it conflicted with one of your meetings that you had to do, but it's a lot easier to move it back to what it was, the 2nd and the 4th, and for the school board to have theirs on a Wednesday, and then it never interferes, and we don't end up having a meeting right after every single holiday, July 4th, whatever it is. So, you know, it needs to be consistent. It can't just be at the whim of what y'all want and what's convenient for whoever's running on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir. Move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Vote's open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the resolution.
Right, moving on to item number 5, ordinances resolution. Resolution to authorize the issuance of Development Authority revenue bonds as acquisition, construction, renovation, rehabilitation, and equipping of the approximately 136 unit The Commons at Princess Anne multifamily housing facility.
We, the first speaker is, he is marked as the applicant for K-5, Thomas, and I'm sorry, I cannot read your handwriting to make out your last name, so if you'll state that for the record, please.
Thank you, welcome.
And then the next speaker is Ann Curtis Saunders.
Thank you. My name is Thomas Attridge, for the record, and I'm with the developer of this project called The Commons at Princess Anne on Princess Anne Road. We Standard Communities are a national owner and operator of affordable housing throughout the country. I'm based in our Charleston, South Carolina office. Our project here is to acquire this existing 186-unit senior low-income housing tax credit property and rehabilitate it. That's really the goal of this authorization through the Virginia Beach Development Authority, which got passed earlier last month. So I'm here, hopefully, to garner your support for what is a desperate rehabilitation of a project that equips seniors in your community and puts them in a better position, puts them in a safer home moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Ann Curtis Saunders, and after Ms. Saunders, will be Reed Greaman.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Ann Curtis Saunders with Maguire Woods. We're serving as bond counsel on this transaction, in which Standard Commons Venture LP has requested that the Virginia Beach Development Authority issue its tax-exempt revenue bonds in a maximum principal amount of $22 million to assist Standard Commons to acquire and renovate The Commons at Princess Anne, a multifamily residential rental housing project consisting of one three-story building containing approximately 186 units. Before the Virginia Beach Development Authority may issue its bonds as tax-exempt bonds, the tax code requires approval of the issuance by city council. The authority has given its approval of the bonds and the project, and recommends that city council approve the issuance. So the resolution before you tonight approves of the issuance of the bonds by the authority. And the last thing I'd like to point out is, these bonds are not a pledge of the faith and credit of the city or the authority, and the authority's obligations related to the repayment of the bonds are limited to the revenues it will receive from Standard Commons. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I noticed that, that I went to the site, and it said this Standard Commons Venture registered on 19 September of 2019 with the State Corporation Commission, and then it mentions that the registered agent is Solution, Inc., in Mechanics, Virginia, and then it mentions that the principal address for the registered agent is Los Angeles. Could you explain the relationship between the registered agent and Standard Common Ventures, just for my edification?
Right, sure, so I believe, and actually, Thomas may be able to answer that a little better than I can. I believe the registered agent is a company that commonly serves as registered agent here in the Commonwealth.
Yeah, please come forward again.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So registered agent is simply what we do in any state that we do business in. In order to have a limited partnership LLC, it's a common practice for national real estate firms. The Los Angeles address is our corporate headquarters.
So, Standard Commons Venture is just, I'll call it a shell, but just a symbolic business enterprise to enable the registered agent?
That's right.
I just want the edification, thank you. It's not prejudicial to your application.
No, no.
Just trying to get smart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reed Greaman, and then the next speaker will be Barbara Messner.
Good evening again, boy, I probably should just run for office. All right, so, we have a law in Virginia, and we, the residents of Virginia Beach, have to vote to give you a housing and redevelopment authority, and every single time it's been on the ballot, we've told you no. And I went through the packet and read this, and this is just a backdoor way, it even says so in your information, of acting as if you have a housing and redevelopment authority by laundering it through the development, the Virginia Beach Development Authority, for low-income housing. There's a lot of merits to this project. I looked through the numbers, I understand it's a $26.4 million investment, they're looking to have 22 million in tax-free bonds gone, we're going to net, it's a little questionable how much we're going to net, but about $188,000 a year in taxes, maybe. My point to you is, why are you doing this again? Do you really think it's your role in local government to provide housing, or take my tax money and subsidize somebody else's housing, no matter how nice it is to give seniors a break? Is that your job? Is it? Probably not. But you're not thinking about that. No speakers signed up to speak to this at the Development Authority, because I would have, but I was at work, so I could pay my taxes, because they hold their meetings during the day, and I can't go. And you appointed him, so I didn't think about that either. So they went, oh, no speakers were against this. You guys, this process is flawed. I keep telling you this, and you keep ignoring what I'm telling you, but people in the community are waking up to this. Sure, it's a nice way to try to get people to vote for you for an election, but it's not really your job. If we wanted a housing and redevelopment authority, we would have told you yes when it was on the ballot. We told you no, so you find another way to do it, SGA's, another mini housing and redevelopment authority. Enough already, really. It's a meritable project, but you're not a bank. My tax money is not your money. The Development Authority, I could go on and on. It's flawed. We shouldn't have a Development Authority as a political subdivision, the General Assembly created it, but you guys continue to support it instead of asking for it to be abolished. You really are not doing your jobs, and while there's merits to this project, you probably should think about that. Thank you.
Barbara Messner?
Ms. Henley, I'm sorry I didn't have time to read everything. I appreciate what you tried to do, but, you know, even a week isn't a whole lot of time, because, you know, 445 pages is a lot, and these boards and commissions, I don't believe in them at all, so, I know you've tried to do a few things, but you're outnumbered. I don't agree with a lot of things, but you've tried to help on some. Okay, for those people that don't know, besides the Virginia Beach Economic Development Authority, on one hand, some people want to appoint somebody new, on the other hand, they say abolish it. It needs to be abolished, it's debt. We pay for their, we pay for their rent at Armona Hoffler's Town Center. How ridiculous is that? Summer House, one of the first projects using HUD money. I don't know if anyone who qualifies for HUD lives in Summer House at the oceanfront. Gold Key has an office, Berkshire Hathaway Town Realty has an office there, Gold Key, on and on and on, breweries, retail, yeah. Yeah, and the senior, it used to be 55 and up, now it's, suddenly it's 62 and over. And I was surprised to see Maguire Woods here asking for tax credits. We'd sure like some tax credits on our bills. I'm sick of paying water, stormwater, all this stuff, fees, fines, et cetera. Maguire Woods, the attorney hired by EVMS on Ralph Northam's case, the attorney, the big law firm, powerful law firm, hired for Andrea Kilmer and Eddie Garcia to sue the city. So, yes, I oppose this, I oppose revenue bonds, more debt, and what's the other one? I mean, all over the place, these projects are going up, the one down at the oceanfront, I don't know who lives in that one, I think McKenzie Woods was a part of that. Yeah, all these multifamily housing units, I, yeah, I oppose the Economic Development Authority and more debt.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Second, second out there. Okay, any discussion, John?
I normally, I know this belongs a meeting, but I think it's important that the public know what exactly this structure is, and personally, I mean, Reed, Mr. Greaman is a personal friend, longtime friend, and I'm sure, but the explanation given really isn't correct. There isn't any other way to say that than it's not correct. This isn't a backdoor to a housing development authority, because I'll talk about that in a moment. There isn't any tax dollars of the city involved. Many people say they want the private sector to solve our housing problem of affordability. Congress heard you. We've heard you. So what they've done is they've created in the tax code, tax credits, more generous than you'd get for other projects, to give a return on investment on capital to the investor that has the money that they don't have, and the government, and they get their return, rather than higher rents to the individual, they get it in forms of reduced tax liability for other expenditures that they might have, or other assets that they have, and it gives them a return on investment, and then it provides affordable housing to the individuals. Now, when the national government is running a trillion-dollar deficit, does that make sense? No, but nonetheless, that's not the private investors' view. He didn't set the fiscal policy that created an incentive to provide the public housing through tax credits. That same federal tax code, not to get overly involved, says that people just can't go out and do this on their own and say, give me my tax credit. It requires that an elected body closest to the body that wants to do the project, which is the Development Authority, has to get the endorsement of the most closest elected body to ensure that it's serving a community public purpose that merits the tax credit, and indirectly merits the deficit, in order to provide people housing that they otherwise couldn't afford. Because absent that private injection through tax credit, we'd have bunches of people down here telling us to use local tax dollars to solve housing problems, because we don't want to be like Los Angeles, and have all these people living homeless on the street, or like San Francisco with a special kind of map, so you can avoid not stepping in the wrong place. So, so this is a constructive approach. I understand that it looks different, because most citizens are busy about their life, and they shouldn't have to be dealing with the details of policy, and, and that's what our job is. And, and that's what our job is, to understand it. But I want people to know that we do do our homework. We do understand the background behind this. We're not trying to backdoor anyone, but we are trying to let the private sector, who is willing to solve a problem we have, to leverage the federal tax code that we may disagree with, but it's the code that we have, to solve a problem. And that's what this is really all about, is providing housing. And we appreciate the fact that someone's willing to step in and do it, because I can assure you, we don't have the money to do what that gentleman, his company, is doing. But in all fairness, the country doesn't have the money to spare either. But you can't put blinders on and leave people homeless. So, it is a smart move, and it is a good partnership, and it's, it's the solution to the toolkit that we have. So, all you got is a hammer, you gotta use it.
Anybody else? Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you approve the, the resolution.
And thank you for your particular comments, Mr. Moss. Okay, now we go to planning, and we're gonna talk about item number one. Peter Coleman and Joan Shepherd for street closure, Ray, one half of unimproved unnamed alley adjacent to 709 Vanderbilt Avenue, District Beach.
The applicant, Representative Eddie Borden.
Hey, Eddie, how you doing?
I understand this was on the consent agenda. I'll be very brief. It's been the city's policy for the last 25 years to close these unimproved alleys that run north-south, mid-block in Croatan, that are being, never been improved, that are basically being used as people's backyards. They don't provide access to the water or anything else, and puts property that is currently being used by homeowners on the tax rolls. And every, it's been, you know, multiple times been council's policy do that. Sorry, this wasn't on consent. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Borden came up to me to clarify something. Would you be willing to come over here to the board and show me what you were trying to, show me without a diagram?
What's shown on here? Well, this is, this is easier. These are, these are paper alleys. They're only between Vanderbilt Surfside and Vanderbilt and South Atlantic.
Okay.
This is in, it's all, it's their backyard.
Okay.
So, it's personal property that they want to close?
Okay, go, could we, please get back to the podium. I wanted to give you the courtesy of an understand, but, you know.
Okay. I still don't understand, but I know that, starting at the north end, you know, they've, they've been closing people's front yard, you know, they don't want the public parking there. This has been going on since the 80s. You know, some of the homes at the north end, you know, it's like a huge parking lot. They can park 10, 20 cars at some of these places, so there isn't enough public access. There's only two streets, Surfside, I think all the way down, is the only place to park. And, you know, when you try to cut through, some of these cut-throughs, you know, if you live there, you can take the shortcut through, and the people can fence their yards if they want privacy. So, you know, just 'cause it's unimproved doesn't mean it should be closed. That's my opinion.
Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers.
All righty, Mr. Power.
I move the adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you approve the application.
Okay, moving on to planning, item three. Chesapeake Bay Foundation Incorporated for a modification of conditions, Ray Environmental Education Center at 3663 Marlin Bay Drive. It was formally approved on December 11th, 2012.
Steve Remmey is the first speaker, and then Barbara Messner.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, members of City Council. For the record, my name's Steve Remmey, I'm local attorney, representing the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, and this request for a modification, modification of conditions. I have with me tonight Willie Agee, who's the Vice President of Administration, and Billy Alman, who's a civil engineer on the project. I'll be very brief. The Brock Environmental Center was approved, as you indicated, December 11th, 2012. It's been a tremendous asset to Virginia Beach. It's in the Bayside District. It's on P1 in the Shore Drive Overlay District. It's outside the Resource Protection Area. The request tonight is to increase the Brock Center by adding a 1,000-square-foot classroom, which will be utilized by the Virginia Beach Public Schools for an environmental studies program, starting the fall of 2020. The architecture in the new classroom is consistent with the existing Brock Center, and the new site plan in your package shows the few changes that are being requested. There are no changes to the parking. The one condition is acceptable. We had extensive public outreach and meetings. It's in your package. Staff recommends approval. The Planning Commission recommended approval, and we respectfully request that you approve modification of the CUP as specified under your L3.
Thank you very much, Mr. Remmey.
And I stand by for questions. Thank you.
Been familiar with this, because the Shore Drive community and Ocean Park, they fought for many, many years to save this property. 13 million was taken by this, was given for this project, for the land and the trust for public land. I believe part of that money went to the McCleskey family. Okay, there's, there's no parking. You have shuttle buses taking tourists there. And we had one grand opening, I believe that was 2012, the grand opening, where they were, you know, selling T-shirts and giving stickers for Light Rail. They are political. Chesapeake Bay Foundation and Lynn Heaven River now are political. And I believe Chesapeake Bay Foundation was able to pay a million dollars for that land, and now they wanna expand. We have schools. They, they do outreach. We don't need any more buildings. There's brick pathways. That's supposed to be, and the parking's all for staff. Billy Alman, appointed to the RAC, ex-president, I think, or member of North End Civic League. Modifications, this is ridiculous. They wanna expand classrooms? They can go, right now, they don't even have events there. They have them at Mount Trashmore. Their 50th anniversary was canceled. They were gonna, they were part of the party that was gonna be at the oceanfront. So, I am 100% opposed to more structures there. Right now, it's brick, and there's, you know, the people that live around there, people park in their neighborhoods, because there's no parking. So, this is outrageous to give it to political groups who endorse candidates, and they wanna have classrooms. They can go to the air schools to educate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more speaker, Andrew Jackson.
Welcome back, Andrew.
Thank you, and I'm gonna be very brief. I'm the kid that grew up like so many other kids today. A big old housing project, about 40 square feet, 40, 40 square, whatever it is. I'll go to some of these neighborhoods, and I look at the kids, and what I do is I look at their eyes, and I don't see hope. I don't see an out. I don't see in them a sight of anything else. And I flatly oppose, oppose any one statement that says we don't need any facilities for further education. That's wrong. If we don't do anything else, we need to educate those coming behind us, and we need to have the facilities to do it correctly. Been there, done that. Kids need all the help they can get from everywhere they can get it from. I don't care if it's a foundation or, or, or somebody on the street. We need to do all that we can do with our kids, and this is an opportunity to do that. We need to take it. Thank you.
Thank you all.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Anyone else wanna speak on this? Okay, Mr. Jones.
I'd just like to comment. The Chesapeake Bay Foundation has been our partner for years in not, not only saving this property from developing, developed into a housing development, or a multifamily housing development, but also in so many other ventures for the environment and educational process in the city of Virginia Beach. And I'm confident that they will continue to do so at this location, so I move approval.
Second.
Can I say something to you?
Yes, Rosemary. Do we have a second first?
I do.
Okay. Rosemary.
I just wanna say that things are gonna happen there that can't happen in a traditional classroom, where they'll have hands-on, onsite experience right there with, with the Bay Foundation and with Living Things. It's, it's a very exciting opportunity for our children.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make just one statement to clarify remarks that were made earlier, in that Chesapeake Bay Foundation is a nonprofit organization that is focused on education and public policy. They're not a political organization, and they do not endorse candidates.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay? All right, we have a motion and a second. The vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you approve the application of Chesapeake Bay Foundation, Inc.
All right, moving forward to the final planning item. Number four, Virginia Beach Digiborts LLC, Taylor Farms Land Company LLC, for a conditional change of zoning to AG1 and AG2, agricultural districts to conditional 1-1, light industrial, Ray Data Center and Mechanical Yard, 2097 Harper's Road, District 6, Beach.
Randy Royal. And then the next speaker will be Louis Shattle.
Welcome.
Good evening. For the record, Randy Royal, business address 4525 Main Street, Kemble Horn Associates. I'm here representing Digiborts for this application tonight. We are looking to rezone 19.4 acres from AG1, AG2 to conditional I1 for a data center. 170,000-square-foot building with about a 30,000-square-foot mechanical yard. 10 acres is where the site itself is. There's a six-acre pond and three acres for a roadway, an access roadway that's gonna be built to access it. The data center will tie into the subsea cables landing in Virginia Beach, will provide direct access to terrestrial networks servicing corporate customers around the world. It's located in a special economic growth area, South Oceana. It is in a 75-decibel noise zone with the Navy. The Navy has a restrictive easement over it. There's not many things that can go in there. The Navy has approved this use. This is, and the report you had in your package told you a little bit about that with the data center and the spinoff from other businesses that would come from it. We had a community meeting back in February on this project, and there had been numerous delays for various reasons. And we went to Planning Commission last month. The citizens wanted to have another meeting, so we had another meeting Monday, September 23rd. Councilman Tower, Councilman Rouse were there at the meeting, appreciate you guys coming. I think we answered all the questions. I got, I got a lot of kudos from the folks after the meeting. Storm drainage was a big issue. We talked about it. I can talk about it all night tonight, if you like. We need to fix the flooding. You guys have appropriated a lot of money to be spent. It's being spent. We're figuring things out around the city. But now with rezonings, you have held us to a higher standard. The, we, we went through the process on this one with standards well above what everybody else does on site plans now. We included 1 and 1/2 feet of sea level rise. We included rainfall intensities that are 20% higher than what everybody else is using. Those are the standards being considered. They may be incorporated for everybody, but for right now, these rezonings have to do it. And the very important thing about that, even with these higher standards, is there's to be zero impact on the downstream systems. That can be done. It absolutely can be done. You have to, we have to use the models. The city provides us with a model for the whole system, all the way to the outfall. We have to incorporate our data there to show that there's zero impact. Simplistically, we get a pond that's big enough, we neck down how much water can go out, such that you don't increase the flooding, you don't cause any new flooding. Our pond for this site is six acres. I've been doing this about 40 years. Typically, that pond would've been a third of that size. It's three times the normal size, and that's part of what we need to do, holding ourselves to these higher standards. Virginia Beach has the strictest standards of anybody around here, but we're a low area. We've got flooding. We, number one, we don't wanna exacerbate the flooding, and number two, we need to fix it. You guys have appropriated the money, so we're looking to fix it. But any new projects, we wanna make sure it doesn't get any worse. That's why we've been held to a higher standard. Your staff has looked at it and said that we've done that. I heard comments about traffic for the site. Data centers don't have a lot of employees, 20 to 25 employees. I think maybe the traffic issues may be with trucks coming out from Barra Pitts, but there's just not gonna be much traffic here. We're accessing the existing median break on Dam Neck Road. That's going to be a major access for the entire property if and when it develops, but we're building the road back to this site now. The noise was a concern. Data centers are generally very, very quiet, other than when they test their generators, which is once a week for maybe 30 minutes or so. Generators are loud, the backup generators. They're about 75 decibels, but you have an enclosure around them. That gets you down to about 68 decibels. You go further out, maybe 25 feet, it's down to about 58 decibels. You have a wall around it, it doesn't really show it there, but the mechanical yard is where all this stuff is. Mr. Moss, we talked about this in corporate landings, so we have a sound study. So, by the time you get beyond that wall there, you're at 53 decibels for 30 minutes once a week. The closest neighborhood, Prince George Estates, is about 2,000 feet away. Lake Placid, I think, is 3,500, and Red Wing is about 7,000 feet away. So, noise is just not going to be an issue. At the Planning Commission meeting, I heard flooding issues. We've talked a little bit about that, and again, I can talk all night if you want me to on that. But zero impact is going to be achieved. I heard impacts to forest and wildlife. This particular site really doesn't have many trees on it. It's the, it's the old farm operation. There's buildings there. It's, it's pretty clear. It's not a forested area. I heard lack of community engagement at Planning Commission. Again, we've now had two meetings, one in February with 40 or 50 people there, and the one Monday night, maybe 20 people there or so, 20, 25 people. And again, I, I answered, I believe I answered everybody's questions to their satisfaction. I heard that we were putting NAS Oceana at risk. The JLU study that came out does not recognize this as a drainage problem. The problem which we need to solve, not necessarily at this site, is to make sure that they can get to critical areas like the base, or like 264 if we have to evacuate. That's not a problem being caused with this particular project. I heard this simply is not a good location for this use. As I said, this, this property is restricted by Navy easement. It's in a 75-decibel zone. It's the perfect place for this type of use, because we actually will get something from the spinoff from it, as opposed to just a warehouse or a, a storage yard. So, it's a good use in a restricted area that attracts other businesses that are looking for that data transfer. Apparently, it's, it's a really big deal to get things milliseconds quicker. It can make a huge difference. It's a great opportunity for Virginia Beach with subsea cables coming here. There's not a community on the East Coast that wouldn't wanna have what we've got here. This is an opportunity to begin what could become a major economic pillar for us. It's a real industry. We're very lucky to have the subsea cables coming in here. Land use, it's, it's the right use for this piece of property. Technical issues, we've solved them. I can speak to them in detail more, if you like. Positive staff recommendation, positive Planning Commission recommendation, and I hope you'll see fit to approve it tonight, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Louis Shattle. And then after Mr. Shattle will be David Puzet.
Welcome.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, council members. Good evening. The, the decision and the opportunity at the moment for Virginia Beach is to be a part of the emerging digital economy, or to let it bypass us. part of the emerging digital economy, or to let it bypass us, because to date, the digital economy has bypassed us. The subsea cables that Randy had mentioned are a great opportunity for Virginia Beach, but they come into the city, and then they bypass it. They go directly to Northern Virginia, or they go down to Boynton, Virginia. That's the Moraya cable that services Microsoft and Facebook. The newest cable that has been announced is the Dunant cable. It's Google's, coming across from Saint-Hilaire, France. I had the opportunity to meet with Google last year, and they asked me to propose to build a point of presence here for them. And because of the delays in my project, not any fault of your own, but delays in the project, caused them to bypass Virginia Beach. What they're going to do is they're going to bring their cable into the existing Telefónica or Telshis cable landing station in corporate landing, put some equipment there to terminate the, the power that is, that drives the, the optics across the ocean, and they're going to go straight to Northern Virginia. So there's another one that's bypassed us. The upcoming cable from South Africa, I currently am identified as the cable landing party for that cable. That'll be the first cable that's going to connect the continental United States with the continent of Africa directly. Very, very important. Another important point for Virginia Beach is that as these cables come in, the opportunity for the, for the data that is carried on these cables to come into Virginia Beach and be processed here, and stored here, and disseminated here, is very, very high and very probable, because all of the, the data center operators that I talk with, and we're talking about all of the, the major operators that you know of, they all are interested in Virginia Beach, but there's not currently enough infrastructure to support them. And again, that's one of the reasons why, why Google bypassed us. So, the opportunity for me is to put in the infrastructure that creates a, a digital ecosystem in this city that I believe is going to help to create seven by 24 by 365 day a year economy for the city. And speaking of the economy, or the economics of data centers, there's a couple of metrics that are, that are well-defined in a, in a economic impact study that was done by the Northern Virginia Technology Council. I'll be very quick with it. If you build a residential community, you lose money, because residential communities cost more for the services that you're providing to them than they get, than you get back out of their, their real estate taxes and personal property taxes. A business that you build in the city, talk about GEICO, or talk about Steel, they deliver about a dollar and 57 cents back for every tax dollar they put in, every, every investment dollar they put in. So that helps to offset the residential.
Thank you very much.
For every data center, it's $9.5 per dollar invested.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation.
You bet. Thank you.
David Pizetsky, and then Stephen Johnston.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Is it proper to pass out a flyer to the council before I start?
Oh, you give it to the city clerk.
Thank you.
You'll pass that out, please.
Sure.
I do not believe in any, any time attacking anyone, so I'm just going to talk about the process by which this has all happened. First of all, there was not two meetings. The first meeting that we heard of, who live on Red Wing, was this one for last week. I already had plans to be out of the country, so I wasn't available. And all those people that were said to be there, I do not believe that many were there. However, I think that when you do something like this, you have to really, really do some deep searching. And when they're talking about creating ancillary jobs, it was also mentioned there'd be about 125 ancillary jobs. That's not going to be so. Oh, where? I mean, we already have, we already have it. Number two, there was a secret road mentioned, and when we get the flyer passed out, that was mentioned at the planning committee. And we'll get to that in a minute. Also, it was mentioned last Monday that this would reduce property taxes, and if I'm wrong, I'd like Randy to dispute me. I'm sorry, I don't know his last name. I'm not being disrespectful. But there's no way this is going to reduce property taxes. And anytime, and there was a lot, at the planning commission, there was a lot of evasive questions and unanswered questions and lack of disclosure. But what bothered me was when we talked about flooding, they presented an expert who said his computer models and data would have no flooding and it justified the process. Then he was asked, well, what if there is? And he says, that's how we learn. Well, I don't feel that my house should be floating down Eaglewood Drive for him to learn about his, his things. And also, if you look at this, this I handed to you now, I'd like to explain it. See number one, the yellow dot there? That's a street that's not mentioned. That's the original thing that was submitted to the planning commission. That yellow dot under D1 is Eaglewood Drive. That's where our homes are. Now, if you look at that road, that's that road there that is nowhere near it. That's the 5,500 feet that he mentioned. But if you look at page two, where it says the district Taylor Farm, and it's a total of 800 acres before they do all the entire project, but you see that other yellow dot there? If you look straight north of that, that's a road. That's a road. So we have two different things. One is submitted, and then looks at number three. Number three is just a blow up of number two. Now, you see where that red, that yellow dot is, and then the road right there? Now, I simply want to know from these gentlemen, are they going to extend Eaglewood Drive and make this a public road, or are they going to pay for the private one? And I would like that to go on record here, that Eaglewood Drive will not be extended. And I think another thing that you need to do is look at the fact that as of eight o'clock this morning, this company did not have a business license to operate in the state of Virginia. This process should have never got this far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Johnston. And after Mr. Johnston is Conrad Schisventer.
Welcome, Stephen.
Hello? He can pass out flyers, I want to pass out some flyers.
Thanks. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come down and speak on this project. I apologize. I meant to email this to the council earlier. I got extremely busy at work. I live in Lake Placid, which is basically southwest, a little south, a lot west from the project. We think this is a good project. I talked to my neighbors. We like the idea of this coming into our city, but we're cautious about it. We hear the other stories from other projects that's happened in the city that's not neighborhood-friendly. The biggest concern in our neighborhood is noise. We had the, we had the Bitcoin mining facility over, over in Kempsville, generated tons of noise, disrupted the neighborhood. We had the new parking lot lighting over Piney Grove Church, again, disrupting the neighborhood. We like for the project. I've been to both of their meetings. They're very well informed. They've made a lot of promises. However, we would like something in writing to protect our neighborhood. Now, this first thing on my list is about lighting, and I will have to admit, it is, well, it's not technical, but I did, was able to track down Mr. Pace, who worked on the Piney Grove project, and looked at, he got his recommendations. And they're pretty simple. Right now, there's a outdoor lighting ordinance working its way through the city. Someday, it'll get the city council and be able to adopt it, enforce some rules. But if not, we'd like to add some proffers to the, to the, to the planning, that the height of the poles not exceed 16 feet. The exterior lighting fixtures, building or pole mounted, shall not, shall all point down. No floodlights on the building. Everything goes down to the ground. No light source shall be visible from 30 feet past the property line. So I can't sit there in my front yard and see the twinkling lights and the light fixtures. And lighting levels at the property line should be zero foot candles measured vertically. For sound, the developer has agreed to take steps to limit the ambient sound. However, there's nothing in writing to it. State code requires, and we would like to ask that 55 decibels or less be maintained under normal operations at the property line. They had talked about the generators. They're probably going to have six huge Detroit diesel generators out there, and when those things fire up, they make a lot of noise. They have promised that they're going to buy these really expensive super silencer enclosures. What we would like to ask is just to limit the time they are allowed to exercise and operate the generators under normal conditions, knowing that if power goes out, the generator's going to run, they have to. And just to limp that time from 10 to 4 o'clock, so we don't disturb our neighborhoods. Again, we think there's a great, they're going to be a great neighbor. We just want some protections for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Conrad Schisventer. And after Mr. Schisventer is Barbara Messner.
Enthusiasm and vision are powerful duo, and I saw both September 23rd at Princess Anne Rex Center. I didn't know what to think going in, but I appreciated the order of operations. First, Virginia Beach skits mid-Atlantic cables. Second, data centers like Nextbin's VB Digitports come to the city to exploit the cables. Third, tech center businesses follow that and spring into our city with a solid way to bolster our economic diversity. The hurdles were how it may influence the quality of life of those around it, and Louis Shadell's presentation seemed to lessen the fears. Same with environmental concerns like building for flooding and building towards energy and water self-sufficiency. I endorse development that is conscious of property rights, flooding, and environmental respect. I believe this is mostly a good idea, and I hope you support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Messner.
Before I even start, that gentleman said there, I've seen other companies that come forward and they're, they're brand new. So if these people don't have an active license, how can you even consider voting? We need proof that they're an active legitimate company. Okay. Good evening, council members, city attorney, and acting city manager Leahy. I've been expressing concerns about traffic and evacuation routes in the Dam Neck General Booth and Oceania corridor since 2014. All have been ignored by Mr. Moss, Mr. Dyer, Ms. Henley since 2014, and now they're ignored by everyone on this current council. I've sent numerous photos of clogged storm drains, broken pump stations, smelly leaking fluids in the neighborhoods from these pump stations. I've asked repeatedly that the original requirement, when Red Wing was built in the early 80s, to have a traffic light on General Booth, that's a six-lane divided highway, be reopened. And if it can't be reopened, which some people don't want, and that's fair, we still need an emergency evacuation route. There's a lot of first responders that live in this neighborhood, a lot of police, fire, rescue, and tons of military. General Booth and Dam Neck at Oceania are two of the heaviest travel corridors in the resort district, roughly 123,000 cars daily at each intersection. Instead of slowing down growth to repair crumbling infrastructure, the city does the opposite. The city keeps approving rezoning of agricultural and residential land to light industrial and high-density projects and storage units. Storage units double dip. When people miss payments, then they auction off people's personal property, which is often the military, who get extended on deployments. And people have financial problems, their, their taxes keep going up. What vetting process is done when the city enters partnerships with developers outside of the city and outside of the US? There hasn't been a Red Wing Civic League for three years. All residents in Red Wing, Beacon's Reach, and other affected neighborhoods should, should have been notified at least six months prior to any discussions or meetings. Google and Amazon avoid this area because of traffic and crime. They're not that stupid. Traffic wasn't a big problem prior to the Diesel Bar and the commissary. So you just keep adding projects that go in, and, and I am 100% opposed to having this even be considered today.
Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers. Mr. Royal, would you like to?
Yep. Yes, sir.
Come back up.
Let's be brief. I'm not sure what you saw. They were speaking about access to Eaglewood. It's not our plan. We're way the heck over on Harper's Road. Like I said, 7,000 feet away from the neighborhood. Mr. Shadell does have a business license. His attorneys dropped the ball between them. They each thought the other was doing it. He filed with SEC yesterday. He filed with Virginia Beach today. He apologizes. Ms., Ms. Wilson from your office was kind enough to call us and let us know, but it's, it's taken care of, and she's seen the paperwork on that. Noise, as I told you, it's like less than 50 decibels at our property line. The closest neighborhood is 2,000 feet away. They're not going to hear anything. Lighting is the same way. I have no problem with what he's asking for. Quite frankly, I think that's what's going to be required by ordinance anyway. But being thrown at me now, we can't really add the proffers on the fly like you can with a conditional use permit. I mean, we're committed to doing that absolutely no problem. I think that's it, unless you have any questions.
Lighting, the lighting?
Lighting, yeah. As I said, we have no problem with that, using the new standards. It's, it's going to be lit inward. There's no reason to light things up like it's a retail shopping center. It's going to be directed down. So we have no problem with doing any of those things, but I, I just, I don't want to add them to the proffers, because that's going to delay us probably a month or so.
Anybody else? Barbara?
You said that you will be less than 50 decibels at the sound, at the property line?
At the property line, yes, ma'am.
This had requested 55, so I suppose you're that. Is there any problem with the timing of when you do your generators? Are they asked?
Oh, no, not at all.
Between 10 a.m. and 4 p.m.?
10 to 4. That's typically what they would do. They wouldn't do it in the middle of the night, but, and again, it's, it's absolutely not a problem. I'll go on the record with that. And it's typically about 30 minutes is how long they test them, about once a week.
I sort of have learned that if it's not in these conditions, it really doesn't matter that you agree to it at this time. So is there not a way, Mr. Stiles, that we can do this? I know adding conditions at the last minute can be a problem.
You, you can't add to the proffers and consider it tonight, under state law. You cannot add, you cannot add to the proffers tonight. James, is that?
But that's proffers. These are conditions. Our conditions we can't add to?
Not in this type of application.
Okay. Well, we had before, but, okay. So you are saying that you will abide by the, the new standards of lighting, which I think conformed to what was requested, and I think certainly is reasonable.
Yes, ma'am.
And that you are taking steps to limit the ambient sound level at the property line to this request 55 decibels, but you're saying it'll be 50.
Yes, ma'am.
And that you would normally do your generator maintenance essentially during the daytime?
Correct. That's typically the norm for all of these type operations. They're not going to do it in the middle of the night. That's, that's bad neighbors.
So this is apparently the best we can do with these conditions, but I think they are reasonable, and you are saying that these are what you would be, be doing voluntarily.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, John, and then Aaron.
Well, I share Mrs. Henley's, you know, obviously understand time is money. You're trying to make a deal, so I appreciate that. But the lesson learned, I think we can always learn something from every experience. So what this tells us is, we need to be looking like we did with lighting. We need to be looking and having this, these basic standards, because I think any neighborhood, where you're putting anything with big portable generators, you'd want to say they had to do maintenance between 10 and 4. I think there's some things we can take away from this experience, and I'm sure our planning department is taking those away and coming back so that we can build those lessons learned into our standards, so that we can meet people's timeliness to the marketplace, but meet neighborhood expectations, because the consumers are the best source of feedback, and they just provided us some tonight. So I hope that we'll be seeing these in, before Christmas next year, as amendments that we can make, so people won't have to learn this lesson twice. But I do appreciate your consideration and your goodwill faith. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aaron, anything?
Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay.
I just wanted to say, this is the effect of what we wanted from these undersea cables. We wanted the business to come here. We didn't want it to bypass us. I mean, and that's the good news of having corporate landing and...
Correct.
There's other things. And so this is exactly the business we wanted to attract.
I would also say how much I appreciate your willingness to adopt our new flooding standards before they're put in place, but of course, that's for your benefit too, because you want to have this facility not be a problem.
We don't want it flooded, and we don't want to cause a problem either. So we're, we're fine, we're working with the higher standards.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Kai?
I'd just like to commend Mr. Royal's presentation, both at the public meeting or community meeting, and tonight, he doesn't waste our time. He speaks to the point and covers the subject very well. This is almost too good to be true in terms of the type of project that you would want for this area. The fact that the Navy signed off on it is important. Tying into the subsea cables is a great start. I'm very enthusiastic about the project. I am aware of the negative issues that people have raised, and I have done some investigation. I won't go through them all, but I'm convinced that they've all been addressed and under control, particularly those with flooding of no, no effect upstream or downstream. And... I'm very happy to support this.
Can I say one more thing? I'm sorry. I just also wanted to mention that this would have qualified for EDIP funds, and this company chose it all on their own and did not come and ask for any money from the city.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just motion.
If I, we need a motion?
Motion.
No move.
Okay. If I could just say one thing. You know, I'm delighted that this type of application comes forward, because our city has many challenges ahead of us with stormwater and school modernization. We have to bring in new businesses, and I'm delighted that an out-of-city company wants to come here and just pave the way and show other people that we are open for this type of business, and that, you know, it's just going to help our economy. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I have nothing about this. But I did ask the city manager, Acting City Manager, a lot of questions about flooding, because that was the number-one issue, and there's always science behind water. So I just wanted to share with the public, so I could put Mr. Leahy's early morning answers to good use, and I did read everything. Is there actually, is like 826,000 cubic feet of storage in this lake? And even based on the 100-year rainstorm event, there is still a surplus of 286,000 cubic feet of storage in the pond before you start discharging water. So I will probably share these answers on Facebook, but they really have done an outstanding job in terms of volume and capacity and discharge, and there is margin for error, and I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, votes open?
By a vote of 11 to 0, you approve the application of Digibords.
Okay, at this point, we'll move on to appointments. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make the following nominations to the Advertising Advisory Committee. Ron Coolman, representing the Convention and Visitors Bureau. To the Bike Way and Trails Committee, Walter Camp. To the Board of Building Code Appeals, Thomas Atherton III, Ruth Bell, Mrs. Jimmy Koch. To the Broadband Steering Committee, Tom Leahy. To the Green Ribbon Committee, Jason Barney, Claudia Cotton, Jeanne Evans Cox, Roy Flanagan, Karen Forger, Laura Hubber, Al Henley, Robert Miller, John Oliveri.
Please, you're out of order.
To the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, Tom Leahy. To the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Tom Leahy. To the Virginia, correction, to the Housing Advisory Board, Faye Silverman. As a mortgage specialist, Teresa Stanley Citizen. Jessica Gugliamo, representing a nonprofit housing organization. To the Human Rights Commission, Pearl Renwick, a high school student. To the Oceana Land Use Conformity Committee, Tom Leahy. To the Social Services Board, Aileen Smith, the Human Services Director. To the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, Tim McCarthy. And City Staff Liaison to the Stormwater Appeals Board, Tony Alger.
Okay. Votes open?
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have appointed those as named by the Vice Mayor.
Okay, is there any unfinished business?
Give me one second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, one second.
I missed one, I think. Mr. Mayor, nominate to the South Side Network Authority, Rosemary Wilson.
Do you have a blank? I'm sorry. Do you have a blank that you can add? We'll need to add it to the...
We just take a verbal, aye.
Can we take a verbal vote on this?
I could do a vote.
It's okay. We just have a verbal vote. Mr. Berluci?
Aye.
Mr. Tower?
Aye.
Ms. Wooton?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Rouse?
Aye.
11 to 0. Both appointed.
Not a problem at all. Trust me, been there, done that. All right. Unfinished business, anyone? New business? Okay, we're going to adjourn into open mic.[1764.33]